I do.
We're kind of looking around to don't care.
Recording in progress.
Good evening. I call this work session of the Green Belt City Council to order. My name's Emmett Jordan. I'm the mayor.
Kristin Weaver, Mayor Protem.
Jenny Pompey, Councilmember.
Frankie Santos Fritz, Councilmember.
Danielle McKinney, Councilmember.
Amy Niesel, Councilmember.
Silky Pope, Councilmember.
It's the new city council. So before we begin, are there any information items or discussion topics that we need to touch on for the end of the meeting?
I'll have two, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, the council holds work sessions on Mondays and Wednesdays several times a month to exchange information with community stakeholders or to gather input from staff, advisory boards, residents. No votes or formal actions are taken during these work sessions. Tonight's session is open to the public as are all council meetings except for executive sessions authorized by state law. Residents may observe our deliberations and we will pause periodically to provide opportunities for public comment. If you wish to speak during these designated comment periods, if you're in person, just raise your hand, wait to be recognized, and you can head over to the podium, to the microphone, and state your name and address for the record. If you're on Zoom, you can use the Q and A feature at the bottom of your screen where you can raise your virtual hand. We don't accept anonymous comments. And finally, if you're watching remotely, just email a comment to the email address questions@greembeltmd.gov. So with the public comment, please limit remarks to three minutes, five minutes during meetings or petitions and requests, and address only the topic under consideration. And as always, we ask you to remain civil and avoid disparaging others and questioning their motives. So this is our first work session, our first gathering since being sworn in just two days ago. It seems like quite the whirlwind, all the activities around Veterans Day yesterday. So tonight, it's an administrative meeting. We've got a number of topics to consider. Most of the topics listed on the agenda were submitted by City Manager Somarone. And I think the bulk of the session, I think, is actually going to focus on reviewing the council's standing rules so that we can adopt them at a meeting in the near future, perhaps even Monday. We'll be talking a bit about the nature of these work sessions, particularly the administrative work sessions, and do some scheduling for the future. But we need to talk about our legislative priorities, and we also need to talk about the District 22 legislative priority and bond sharing meeting that's coming up soon. So we'll also talk a bit about the council retreat coming up on, it's scheduled for December the 6th. We're going to have to shift that around because it's very important that we are all there for that session. So we've got a lot on here. So I think those are the four areas that we will spend most of the time focusing on. And depending on how things go, we will either go into a closed session or maybe even just speak a little bit about this process with the city manager, setting goals for the city manager briefly. Mr. Somarone.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Council. Good evening, residents. Mr. Mayor, you made a reference to the list. This is the list of pending topics I had noted down that the council had at one point. Signal that wanted to discuss. It's not a comprehensive list. There are other items that I have in a longer list that were not included on here, but others were more administrative items. And so I didn't want to overwhelm anyone by having a 20-point list.
And with a new member of council and with us all sort of thinking through some of the discussions that we had during our campaigning over the past few months, I'm sure there's some other issues that we'll be able to deal with in the context of an administrative work session such as this. So in the limited amount of time that we have, let's go ahead and dive in and talk a bit about the standing rules. Yeah, please.
I might make a suggestion that maybe we should talk about the legislative priorities and the bond bills and the things that are truly time-sensitive because I think this is the only, this is really the best opportunity we have before we get to that legislative dinner on December 2nd. So I would propose we start with that and then go to the standing rules because I'm not sure we're going to be ready to adopt the standing rules by Monday. I think we maybe need to think about doing that after our retreat. Because I think that'll give us some more opportunity to discuss things. But we know that the bond bills and the other things that we want to address at the District 22 dinner are time-sensitive.
Yeah, that's true. It's important that we do talk a bit about the standing rules as well.
No, I'm not saying not to do that.
Hold on, hold on. Let me finish, please. Let me finish. So it is important that we spend some time talking about, but it was just for orientation sake. But yes, and we really haven't gotten a full presentation. I know the city managers have actually been kind of working through what the agenda is going to be like December the 2nd and given Thanksgiving and other time that we've blocked out for family time. We, as you said, don't really have much time at all. So what's council's will? Shall we start off and talk about legislative priorities, bond bills, in particular focusing in on December the 2nd?
That works for me. I agree.
Works for me as well.
Okay. So there were some materials in the packet, and there was a graphic as well. But I'll go ahead and hand this discussion over to Mr. Somarone because you have been working with the city managers and have been talking quite a bit. I think you actually have an outline and.
Yes, we have. We've been meeting weekly since a couple of weeks ago. The process, we've continued to fine-tune the process, but overall, the outline's going to be the same where we, every municipality has an opportunity to discuss their legislative priorities and their bond bill request. And each municipality is assigned a joint or a shared legislative priority. So for example, last year, we included economic development requests that were of interest to all the municipalities in District 22. The law enforcement recruitment grants was a top priority item for Berwyn Heights and a few others, but we all benefit from having those grant funds available. So the presentation format's going to follow the same as last two years. It's just incremental improvements. You know, as managers, if something works well, we keep that and we just keep improving and fine-tuning things that work well. So the process will be the same, same structured. The order, we think we're going to keep the order the same, which is in the order that the municipalities are listed. So we'll present that order. Obviously, the mayor, the host city mayor provides the welcoming remark, and they are the emcees. So, Mr. Mayor, I couldn't, you know, that's just a procedure we settled on earlier in the process, so.
Well, we're going to be in New Carleton, right?
We're going to be in New Carleton, yes.
That'd be great.
I look forward to it. It's not going to be at the municipal building. It's going to be at the Metro Four Points.
Four Points Hotel.
Yes. So that's where the event will take place. The process is going to, again, the presentation's going to be the same. The cost is, we believe it's going to be in the same range as when Hyattsville hosted. When we hosted last year, we got an amazing deal through the American Legion. So that's just a partnership and there's a kitchen and house. It's going to be a little higher than it was last year, but it's still within a reasonable amount of expense for the municipalities.
That's great. Ms. Pope, do you have your hand up?
No, no.
So on the, the.
What are the shared, you've already kind of worked out or agreed on shared priorities?
We have, those have remained the same with the exception that the, there's interest of swapping the law enforcement grant because that money has, the governor has supported funding for the law enforcement agencies. The new law enforcement pressure we're facing throughout the District 22 in particular is the immigration and custom enforcement situation. So the municipalities thought it would be good to do something collectively in support initiatives that the state already has. So if you recall, Nicole Williams was spearheading, delegate Williams was spearheading several bills to protect identity information and other things to just have fair treatment for all Maryland residents. So supporting initiatives like that, the managers thought it would be good, particularly because different municipalities have different tools and resources to assist their communities when it comes to immigration issues. So good to have a baseline that the state would support. So that's a new initiative on there. That's something, I welcome the feedback from council based on the work that we've been doing. That is the Know Your Rights capacity building, the legal clinics. I share with the city managers, administrators, that Green Belt will be behind this endeavor because of all of the things we've done. But if council wants to take, since we haven't discussed that particular issue, if council wants to discuss that, I welcome an opportunity to hear your thoughts on it and take that back to the team. All the other priorities will remain the same.
So what, the other shared priorities?
Yeah, let me put up the comprehensive list. I have it on my run-a-show. Just bear with me. All right. The infrastructure and state highways, the mental health, housing affordability and enabling legislation for zoning and land use authority, juvenile justice reform, the economic development in LED streetlights, and environmental sustainability. Last year, these particular topics were spearheaded by different, spearheaded and presented by different municipalities. So Riverdale presented on the infrastructure and state highways. Edmiston presented on mental health services. Hyattsville, housing affordability and enabling legislation for zoning and land use authority. New Carlton presented on juvenile justice reform. Berwyn Heights presented on the police retention and recruitment grants. Green Belt presented on the regional economic development and LED streetlights, and University Park presented on environmental sustainability. So this year, what we're proposing to replace is the police retention and recruitment, and that is driven largely again by the fact that Governor Moore and the Office of Juvenile Services and Justice has continued funding for police departments.
What are we replacing?
We're replacing that with immigration, immigration proposals.
Okay. And do you know, have the other municipalities also, you know, approved these shared priorities?
The, each municipality was asked about where they stand on these issues because, as I mentioned, the municipalities that presented on them, that was a top priority for them, and they got support from the surrounding municipalities. So infrastructure and state highway continues to be a priority. For us, just a few days ago, you requested that we have a pothole filled. It's on 193, so it's not the city's responsibility. So the team went out and it's on the board on the boundary of SHA. So we put in a ticket for that. But, you know, with anything with SHA, they have a large network of roads to take care of, and so they don't always get the things on our schedule. And there are projects like the intersection of Lake Crest and 193 that it's been on a project to be studied and re-engineered, and for years it hasn't happened. So that continues to be a priority, not just for Riverdale, but for most of the municipalities. Mental health services, that's a shared concern. We see less and less resources for mental health services. Likewise, for juvenile justice reform, an issue that municipalities have made, the justice reform legislations that went into effect were great and welcome, but they also needed social services funding. Because without the funding to redirect young people, the legislation doesn't work as well as designed. The housing affordability enabling legislation for land use authority, that's combining two topics. Housing affordability is seen as a crutch for the state and its economic growth, but it's also creating significant hardship for communities. Many, many communities feel they're being priced out of where they live. So that continues to be a priority. The economic development, we just talked about this, Mayor, last week with the FBI project. That is over 7,000 jobs with over $4 billion of investment that was scheduled to come to Green Belt. And it would not just be a boost, an economic boost for Green Belt, but for the entire region. And the governor believes that it will be for the entire state. Then finally, the environmental sustainability. We are seeing 100-year floods being more common, 50 years and 20 years. So those issues are not going away. Stormwater issues are not going away. And that needs to be part of our environmental sustainability strategy along with energy, energy generation, energy imports. We're seeing energy prices just rise. Those are just continue to be shared concerns. So I don't see anything in this list that is controversial or its importance diminished over the last year. But I welcome your feedback. If there's something that you think we need to remove, I can take it back to the administrators and share your concerns.
Well, it's not just about concerns. It's just about, you know, council being in the loop and going along. So I don't know if any of my peers, but just stepping back just a little bit for Councilmember Fritz. This gathering, for many years, Green Belt and the various municipalities would meet with the state senator and delegates to discuss legislative priorities. Green Belt would actually have a dinner pre-session, and we would also have a dinner mid-session to try and give updates on bills that had been submitted. So I guess it was two years ago, Senator Washington came up with the idea of all of the municipalities in District 22 meeting together and sharing their legislative priorities as well as their bond request at the same time. So that's what has brought us to this meeting. This is the second, the third time that we've.
This will be the third year.
So we talked a little bit about those shared priorities. So I kind of take it that the economic development piece, again, would be Green Belt presenting that section?
Yes, I signed us up for that, particularly in light that the state, the county is suing the White House over the FBI project. And, you know, we're referenced on it because the FBI is, the future home is in Green Belt. So unless you want to present on any other topics, I.
Well, you know, I wish we, I wish we weren't having to do this. I wish that the FBI project would have been approved and moving forward years ago. So we are here where we are, certainly. But you mentioned the LED streetlights as well, so that would be incorporated. So we are here where we are, certainly, uh, but you mentioned the LED streetlights as well, so that would be incorporated.
Yes, that's incorporated and, and it fits nicely in there. Um, it doesn't fit squarely in the economic development, but for, for some reason, I've. The team has the perception that we are somehow deeply involved in the topic, but we haven't made much progress more than anybody else. We're in the same situation as everybody else on LED streetlights. We've done the studies, we've done the assessments. We've asked Pepco for um the cost estimate to acquire the lights. So that we can move forward with the decision of whether we're acquiring the lights and converting them. So let, let, let's just say that the team um. They're all eager to see LED, LED streetlights in their communities and Pepco move forward with this. They thought that it would be best we push this forward.
Okay, yeah, uh, Councilmember Pope.
So does that mean that Pepco is kind of like struggling with getting this project ahead? Or they, they maybe changed their mind or?
They're, the, the, they have a legal requirement to offer us the, the, the option for us to acquire the lights. That there's been an issue, um, the, the requirement is because they have failed to do the LED conversion. So the Public Utilities Commission has essentially forced them to give us the option to acquire the light. So it's not that Pepco is eager to sell us the lights or whatnot, uh, this is a requirement of Pepco. The challenge has been is we're fighting over lights. For example, I think I, I believe I might have shared the, uh, email, my latest correspondence with. Pepco that we heard back from State Highway Administration with disputed eight lights in the last round. They've accepted four and pushed back four. So now we're fighting over four lights. So it puts me in a situation that I'm fighting over four lights uh with the State Highway Administration. And it's now probably consuming, consuming a lot of time and delays in the project for us. Um, so to your, to your, to your, answer your question directly, no, I don't think, I don't think. That Pepco has all the incentives to move faster uh on this. And we're trying to move as fast as we can, but we can't move any faster unless Pepco gives us a cost estimate to acquire the lights. A contract to, for us to acquire the lights. We are still fighting over, or disputing certain requirements that they have. We have, unlike College Park and a few other municipalities, we have not filed a legal complaint, a suit with them. Uh, through the Public Utilities Commission, because I believe that Sue Ellen is doing a great job representing the Chevy Chases. And College Park and a few other municipalities, so we're gonna benefit from that, that outcome. Um, so we're, I'm waiting to see how that uh. Plays out and will benefit from what that, from whatever Sue Ellen negotiates.
Sue Ellen is, is a municipal attorney that represents a number of municipalities on this and other issues.
Sue Ellen is our, is one of our lawyers. Um, Sue Ellen represents us on the case against Prince George's County Fire and EMS Services. That's one of our attorneys. We have several attorneys on retainer. More than I would like, but they're necessary and each one has a function.
Uh, Councilmember.
Yeah, um, just with regards to the acquisition of the Pepco uh streetlights. So they're currently Pepco-owned and this would be the city acquiring them. Is the city currently, I guess, who's paying to light them? You know, electricity for that, is that shifted with the responsibility with the acquisition as well? Um, does that become now a municipal, uh, it becomes part of like municipal overhead to, to power those lights? Was it previously Pepco that was uh paying to keep them on, however they would do that in their own accounting?
So we've always paid for the streetlights. We've been over, overpaying for the streetlights uh as of last November. A, a year ago, when I signed off on the inventory uh assessment. We had overpaid the streetlights by the tune of over eighty thousand dollars. So Pepco owed us, at that point was eighty-three thousand dollars in uh charges. And we overpaid them by eighty-three thousand dollars. Under the new model, we will continue to pay for the lights. It's, it, what will change is what services we're paying for. We have three options. One option is where we pay just for the electricity consumption of the lights. We pay the full service charge for the lights, which is a rate that Pepco proposes to charge the municipalities. Where Pepco will be responsible for the lights, for upgrading the lights and for maintenance of the lights in perpetuity. And then there's a rate, a different rate where we would just, we can pay just maintenance and electricity of lights. Um, if we do the LED conversion and then they'll take over from there. So there's different options that we will have. It, it would be council's decision to decide which action it wants to go to. The do nothing option is everyone would be rolled over into a tariff rate that is all-inclusive. That we will pay for the eventual LED upgrade, the maintenance and the electricity. And the, the option where we would have the most autonomy is we only pay for the electricity. But we will be responsible for buying the fixture, upgrading the fixture and taking all the calls. For street outages or the complaints about the lights being too, too low, too high and all that.
And uh the LED conversion, I'm guessing is going to uh be a cost savings based on what we're paying for the electricity now. Are they more efficient? Are they like sodium dioxide bulbs now or?
Yeah, so the, the, many of our lights are high-pressure sodium lights and they consume a lot of electricity. The, we do have many lights that are LED lights. The, the feasibility studies and the, the, the cost benefit analysis that we had done early on. Uh, Hyattsville has several, several studies done, College Park, now it's on its third study. Um, they all indicate that the faster we convert the lights to LED, the shorter the payback period is. For the investment of, of acquiring and converting the lights. Long-term, it also means less energy consumption, which reduces the demand on the grid.
Thank you. Well, well, thank you, uh, Mayor Portem.
Um, so does our, is our ask of our legislators to help us with, for example, negotiating with S H A about those lights? I mean, what specifically, I mean, there's also, I know the listing on the bond bill we haven't gotten to yet. But in terms of having the streetlights as a, as a priority topic, what are we asking of our legislators to do related to that?
Yes, specifically, we were asking for increased funding for state initiatives. Uh, specifically to the, the Maryland Energy Administration's Streetlight and Outdoor Lighting Efficiency Program. Uh, acronym SOL, S O L E, which grants uh LED conversion projects. So the, the, the pool of funding is very limited. So if, if all District Twenty Two uh municipalities wanted to apply and have that light conversion, uh, access to that funding. We all couldn't, it couldn't support all of our, all of our LED conversions. So we're specifically asking for that uh program to, funding to, to increase. Given that it's now a year since we asked that and the, the barriers that we're facing is just. There isn't a stricter timeline for Pepco to follow on this. That we, it would, we would benefit from the delegates and the senator uh pushing legislation. That there's a strict timeline of when the municipalities will, are expected to have agreements to acquire the light and convert the lights. If we so choose, right? Because not everyone is gonna be in the position to acquire the lights and manage their own lights.
Um, have we gotten the money that Pepco owes us from our overpayments yet?
So I know we have not and I did not get a commitment from them to, that they would extend the credits that are owed to us. So the, when we assigned the, agreed to the inventory and the billing a year ago, last November, the credit that we were owed was eighty-three thousand. I, I, in March of this year, given, we had not received the payment and there was no indication that we were gonna, we had. We were going to finalize the inventory of lights. I put a hold on all payment, on Pepco, on payments to Pepco's streetlights program. So I'm probably now on my seventh disconnect notice from Pepco for not paying streetlights. Um, and I've, I have shared with them that I won't pay it. Because I, I'm being put in a, in a situation where I am paying for a bill that I know it's overcharged. So I cannot fulfill my fiduciary duty, paying a bill that I know is incorrect and they owe the city over eighty thousand dollars. So that's the position I've taken. They have not disconnected the lights. I don't think they're going to disconnect the lights. Um, but we're probably now, we owe, we owe Pepco for streetlights to the tune around eighty thousand dollars. But they owe us eighty-three dollars. So I think at this point, uh, I think we're, we're probably breaking, breaking, breaking even. And I know we got a CPA auditor in the room and I, 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 I think uh. Uh, Robert might agree with me that it's the right move to pressure them to make a decision on uh moving the lights. We, I'm, I'm just, I'm not asking for anything special. I just wanna find, finalize our inventory so that I can pay the proper bill that we should uh pay. And not continue to overpay on a bill.
And just for the record, I, I think it's a good list of priorities. I, I agree with changing the, if, if, if we have gotten what we need. Like if the grants have been maintained for the police retention and recruitment, that doesn't seem like we need to keep asking for that. So I, I, I think it makes sense to add the, um, the, the bills related to immigration as support for those. That makes sense to me.
Two things, uh, one with the uh, what are we specifically asking? I, I made the point at a meeting, I don't know, a couple of months ago, that in addition to looking for funding. Uh, I, I think that we should be asking our senator and delegates to, to advocate for us actively. You know, with the Board of Public Utilities or Public Commissions, to actually make them aware of this uh, this holdup. And also working, advocating for Pepco to go ahead and set the tariff, set the rates that we can move ahead. So it's not just the SOL funding, but it's, it's also, we want them to advocate for us.
Okay, I, I will write that up as part of our remarks.
And the other thing is with uh, with the streetlights, uh, there was a question about responsibility between the city. Not just ours, but a, a number of cities and state highway about, uh. So were we able to resolve that question about responsibility? I think in the past, uh, State Highway has been responsible for the lights on State Highway.
No, in the past, in the past, there were over four thousand lights the municipalities have been paying on behalf of State Highway Administration. So the State Highway Administration is facing some big challenges that they now have to pay for thousands of lights.
Yes.
And that's why they've been pushing back. There's something that they had not been budgeting for and the municipalities have been paying for this. Uh, so for all the streetlights that we disputed, we've been paying for it. We believe that State Highway Administration should pay for them because they're on state highways.
So that's an open question still?
Uh, well, no, it is not an open question because the, I have read the regulations and the guidelines that the State Highway Administration has put out. It's clear to me that we are not responsible for the lights. They wanna push the responsibility onto us. But unless council wants to take them over, my position is, is that they're not our, our responsibilities and I have no confusion about that.
Right. Okay. Hey, are there some other comments from uh council about the shared priorities? The, the structure of the shared priorities for the uh, the meeting on December second? So I'm satisfied with them. Do we need to vote on this at the council meeting? We probably should.
This, the, the, the joint priorities, um, I don't think you need to vote on. What you'd need to vote on specifically is what is a unique uh legislative priority for the city to advocate on. And last year, I will, it's part of your packet, what, what we included uh in last year's priorities. Um, so you have the legislative priorities, you can pick, ideally you would pick two to three to focus on. Um, and that's in keeping with the, the priorities that council has submitted to PG CMA and M M L in the past. So you would pick two to three legislative priorities that you want the delegates and the senator uh to know. And then we pick uh two, up to two bond bill requests. We like to put two because we wanna give an option, right? We don't wanna leave money on the table, so we wanna get whatever money we can. So we put an option that we really need, but we also put an option that we know that has broad appeal to let, to the. To the delegates and the senator and they could justify in funding. Uh, last year, we put, we put the, the two elevators and we put, um, remind me, Tim. We put the two elevators and there was another one that we put up. Streetlights, we put the Pepco streetlights. Um, and we received funding for just one elevator. And part of our, our strategy is we believe that we can, we can secure anywhere between a hu- last year. Last year, based on the funding that was available and, and, and please remember that there were some budget constraints and they did significant cuts last year. We, we estimated that we can secure anywhere between a hundred and fifty to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. For uh, uh, bond bill money and we secured two hundred thousand for one elevator. I think this year, we're, we're probably in the same range. Um, so we're, we, we're proposing a couple of things. We have the Buddy Attic uh Park Walking Trail and Stage uh as a request. And we estimate that that's gonna be around two hundred and fifty thousand for the engineering and construction of. Sorry, the engineering is for the stage and the walkways, the ADA walkways to the stage and then the construction of the stage. For, uh, we've, we're also including in there the Pepco streetlight upgrade uh to LED. So this will be for the purchase and, and some funding for its LED conversion of lights. Um, now these are, and we also include in our list the second community center elevator. We have it listed right now as three hundred thousand to account for increases in, in cost. Terrorists have been hitting several of our, of our suppliers and our contractors, so we know that the cost is an increase from last year. Uh, but we can, we will likely fine-tune that number as we get closer to the submission deadline. So those are the three things that we have identified. We obviously welcome council's feedback on those. And the additional items that we have included such as lights at Shrum Hill Park. The, the community center gym stage floor uh to rebuild and refurnish the community center stage. We also continue to advocate for the addition of the Spring Hill Lake Recreation Center. Uh, then we, what's new this year is the Spring Hill Lake Pocket Park. That is the little pocket park that is uh right between the Green Belt Middle School and the Dora Kennedy School.
Right.
You could drive by and completely miss it, but it's, it's tiny, it's in bad shape. Uh, we think it needs replacement. The, the park is primarily on um Prince George's County Community Public Schools. So it's not our land, but it is an area that needs, needs to be repaired. And the schools don't really have money to, to pay for all the staff they need, let alone do these capital improvement projects.
Well, well, thank you very much. So uh, looking at those bond bill projects, three of them have price tags. Uh, associated with them. I'm wondering, uh, council members, do you have any other suggestions? Things that come to mind that, that aren't, uh, haven't been brought up previously? So I'm pretty comfortable going ahead. When we talk about uh walking trail, that, that is the uh access from the parking lot. Down to the stage area?
So the master, the master, the Buddy, Buddy Attic Master Plan has a walking path from the parking lot. That's a loop. It co, it starts at the parking lot, goes through the inclusive playground, down to the picnic area and down to the stage. And then it comes back on the other side. So that's the walking trail. It's a loop.
Yeah, very good, very good. Uh, so, and that design and engineering would be, would take us to, I don't know, fifty percent or sixty percent. The, the way that these uh design and engineering projects work, it, it, I'm beginning to understand it. But you know, there are different stages that are sort of laid out, so this money would take us how far towards, uh, towards construction?
Yeah, so we estimate that the, the engineering, full engineering to get to construction for the trail. Is going to be a hun- around a hundred and fifty thousand.
Right.
So then it'll be two hundred thousand for, for building the stage. And this is the stage, this is, there's a lot of assumptions and unknowns. We're not sure what the stage is gonna look like entirely. We're pricing it on uh what projects in the surrounding area. Have cost for, for stage, outdoor stages. The, the process of designing and building the stage at Buddy Attic Park will require a lot of community input. So it would, it wouldn't, it would be something that we would do in partnership with, with Prab. Because they've led the work uh on doing the, the Buddy Attic Master Plan. So there would be a primary lead on this project because it needs to, whatever we design needs to be in line with the master plan for Buddy Attic.
Okay, so this sounds like it's going to take us to about twenty, thirty percent uh design and engineering.
For the trail, we expect to get to a hundred percent. That includes construction. So we, we want designs that we can go to construction.
Excellent, excellent. There was another, yeah, please.
I don't know if this is too early or not, but uh should we be considering um. Support for what would be in the Indian Creek Master Plan Trail, uh, and I know we're just. Support for what would be in the Indian Creek Master Plan Trail, uh and I know we're just, we're, we. Haven't even done our community meetings yet, but with hopefully. That there will be some type of concept that will come out of it and we will need designs for whatever concept is selected. And that, I'm assuming, will also take additional funding to do. Is that possible to add that in, or is that, are we too early on in that process to include that in twenty twenty six?
I I I think there could be a way that we can frame it, so the, we learned, we learned this a bit of a, uh we learned the the. Sort of like some of the the strictness of the bond bills through trial and error, you can ask for. Construction money and that can include engineering and design, but not. Just plu- designs without engineering that don't go to construction, so with, once we have the study. The concepts for the for the Indian Creek um playground and park. We could take that on to engineering construction, so it would fit, we just don't have it in hand. Um but I think we we could, we could submit for for Indian Creek, I. So once the, once the the con- the consultant's done with the project, we will have the concept plan flushed out and it would be. A master plan for Indian Creek.
Yeah, I think that's what I was gonna say, is I tried to get, I tried to get the consultants uh at the 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 um meeting at Spring Hill Lake. What la- was that just last week, um to even give like ballpark prices for the the different concepts? And they weren't even willing to do that, so I think unfortunately that might be too early to be able to ask to put something in a presentation by December second. With even having a. I mean, they they, he he flatly refused to give like even an estimate on the like the three different concepts they were presenting, so we might have to wait for next year on that one.
There's, there's already some assumptions regardless of what concept they were already gonna go for, right, there's gonna need to be some type of parking. Regardless of it was set, you know, concept one, two and three. And so if you can assume, make some assumptions on number of parking spaces, that would need to be allotted, that's one thing. They also talked about, I think all three of them could potentially need to shift the actual trail itself.
For the parking.
Right, so that's regardless of what plan is. So thinking about those basic things, if we could, you know, even make some assumptions on what that cost would be, that could get us further.
Yeah, yes, council member, please.
Um I don't think it's for this year, but um. I have spoken with a couple of the county council members about the Capital Bike Share Station at the Green Belt Metro and. Um you know, they seem confident that, you know, it was in the previous budgets, there's no reason why it couldn't be done this year, but if it's pushed back again. It would a state bond bill. Make it more likely for it to be completed because the funding would have been earmarked for that specific project, it would be much less fungible.
Yeah, I don't know that. I I'm sorry, I have two two, I I have, I'm having an internal reaction to the county. Putting this uh activity on its budget and not following through. Because there's money in it for it and it's approved, it is a project manager that. Has the flexibility to decide which location to go for, so I ha- I have a. A personal conflict with that approach of doing business, so now if it was purely like we have. A list of projects that far exceeds all of the funding capability, then we can, and we are in the ten year plan, just at the bottom of the list. Then I can see looking at alternative funding sources, but I think this particular project, it is. I I I find it problematic that we have bike uh Capital Bike Share Stations in the city. But cannot connect back to the point of origin, which is the metro station and that's, that to me, it's such a simple case to make that if you are. Getting off the metro and you wanna bike to the to the last mile, you can't get it at the point of where you arrive to the city.
And I I only bring it up because it is, it is just uh an oversight that. You know, I'm looking at any avenue that we can to advocate to get this done and. Uh because, you know, since I moved to the city, I've been asking when it's gonna happen, so and it it's 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 been pushed back so many times, so. I just want to see if maybe the state could play some role in getting the county to finally. Do do something, but I understand it's not really about the funding, there's some decision making process that's getting frozen up somewhere.
Yeah, I think um, I think now we gotta push on our, on the county couns- uh county cow- uh executive. Because it really is a county ex- uh executive oversight function, the executive oversees. The county's transportation director.
Okay, uh I I'm pretty comfortable with these uh three, uh council member, please.
These top three are the ones that you're proj- prioritizing, the park, the lights and the community center to the stage floor, is that?
The. The, in order of priority, the elevators, the second item, the 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 one with the highest priority, the issue with the elevator is. Will they fund that second elevator after funding the first elevator? So the the Buddy Attic Park, you know, when I've discussed it with the mem- mem- our our delegates and the senator. There's, oh, that that's cool, that there's a, there's um a more welcoming stance on those projects. But the the lights, as you can see, we have this compet- competition level or competition grade field at Shrum Hills, but we don't have lights. We haven't had lights on it, we will benefit from uh adding, extending playtime at the field by adding lights. The lights at the basketball court at Spring Hill Lake Recreation Center has worked out well, especially in days like today at six o'clock, the it was dark. Kids can play at six o'clock, I don't know that they will play in this cold weather, but.
So I'm just trying to, just, I mean, have we decided which two we're presenting, I guess I'm just not clear on that.
Well, no, no, we're discussing it, uh I'm comfortable with the three that actually have dollar amounts assigned to them. Yes, please.
Okay, I I was just gonna say, you know, my priorities would be um the Buddy Attic Walking Trail, the lights at Shrum Hills or the in the Pocket Park. Um I know we don't have um, you know, a dollar amount for the lights, but I wouldn't think that would be too hard to procure. Um and I know the Pocket Park also has some difficulties because. I don't know that we can apply for funding for something when we don't already have that use agreement with PG CPS and. We all on this council know how hard it is to get a use agreement with PG CPS, so I think that's a, that's um, that's a hurdle there. Um but I do think that the lights at Shrum Hills Park and the Buddy Attic Walking Trail would have the, would benefit the largest. Um number of residents. That's just my, that's my thinking on that.
And now, Portion.
Well, and I and I agree with that and I also like the that that if we if we were able to include the Pocket Park. E- as 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 a priority, that gives us one in center, east and west. Um although I I agree that the challenges of getting a use agreement with PG CPS may make that one less likely, but that would also be, if we bring it up this year. With the idea that that this is sort of floating it for the first time and then we might be more likely to get it next year, we could work out those details and that also dovetails well with. Cause I think it's it's the one that's like, it's close to the school, but it's not the one on the school property, correct, it's, yeah, so, but that could dovetail nicely with. The uh when Spring Hill Lake Elementary School is floating, i- is 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 um, that's not, they don't. Swinging, they did, he's floating, I forget what the term is, anyway, move swinging, swinging into Dora Kennedy. Um the other thing, I think the one reason not to include the Pepco Streetlight Upgrade is it sounds like that's actually part of our ask. For that fund, this seems like sort of asking for the same thing in two, from two different ways. Maybe we wanna do that, but but I I like, I like the council member Poppy's uh three. Um not that we expect to get the Pocket Park funding, but that then that puts it on the radar of our. Uh legislators so that when we bring it up again next year, it's it's already been sort of floated.
I I I would agree um about Buddy Attic and I think Shrum. Um a question about Shrum in putting in the lights, I'm assuming by putting in lights that also. Potentially increases the possibility for additional revenue as well because our people. Who want to utilize that who are not residents, is that how the funding structure is gonna work for that?
Yes, it it would certainly extend the playtime and if we are, if we are renting it out, issuing permits, which we have a. We have seen an increase in applications for organized groups to use that that space. So yes, I the, I I I pause to say how much revenue it could bring because we have so many recognition groups and. So many city groups that want the space and, you know, those are not. Revenue generators for us.
Yeah, um and then as far as the Pocket Park is concerned, I I am, I like having. Um priorities in east, west and center, if the Pocket Park is in a possibility because we don't have that use agreement in place. And I would love to see if we could come up with some amount of assumptions for funding needed for Indian Creek Trail, but.
So to recap, you you, one and two is Buddy Attic and Lights uh in the Pocket Park. Only if it's possible, if not shifted to another priority in Greenbelt West, which would be Indian Creek, okay.
Council member Pope.
Yeah, the the issue with the Pocket Park is we don't own it, so it, you know, so that's my my concern, that maybe, maybe it would be best to work towards. Getting the agreement first and say, look, you know, give us the agreement, we're fix it up. Um and and, you know, because I know they don't have the money for it, like you said, Prince George's County School System, I don't think. And now with with the French immersion moving out and then I don't know what's gonna happen after we utilize the the school for two years. Uh temporarily, I don't know what they're gonna do with with the school um in general, but the uh walking, the Buddy Attic Walking Trail. Um I I was quite happy with the with the three items that had the dollar amounts next to it, but. I would, I could go with the lights at Shrum Hills Park because I think that makes sense as well.
Council member, please.
Would it be possible to, between now and, uh sorry, we're voting on, are we voting on these three tonight or? For a vote, would we be able to contact and uh PGC uh, I'm sorry, the school system? PG CPS about the park, because, you know, I don't want the money to sit. Uh you know, i- if they're not going to move on it, so at least see, engage initial interest. Um in working together if we if we were to secure the funding, because otherwise I I do hear there's interest in other. And other things that we could be doing in the next uh year.
I I just don't think you're gonna get an answer back in time, um it it will take a while, presumably.
Cause we we should uh, you know, decide and vote on it on Monday, you know, given the the timeframe, I I have two, two concerns. Uh one, with the lights at Shrum Hills Park, uh I would be really hesitant to uh to put that forward without. Talking to the homeowners associations, uh Hunting Ridge or the Lakes of Greenbelt Village or Greenbrook Village Estates. Because when the lights that are there now went in, uh there was a lot of feedback, so. I'd be a little cautious about, you know, it'd be great if we did get the funding, but we need to uh talk with residents. The other thing has to do with just with the approvals in in general, we did quite well uh last year in getting the funding for the elevator. Other municipalities didn't get quite as much funding or any funding at all. So I'm just wondering, one of the criteria uh for these bond bills is uh, you know, you have to complete the work in a certain amount of time. So I'm just wondering how how we're coming along with spending the money particularly for the movie theater.
Movie theater, we we, as you know, we've gone back and forth on the bathrooms, the windows, like the the entire building and. Everything in it is is part of the historical record of the building, so that being a historical site requires extra approval, so. The toilet that we purchased to replace had to be approved by the Historic Trust, Maryland Historic Trust. The, we've got approval on tentative approval on the marquee recently, and I think we we shared that with council. The marquee, the windows, no, on the way, the the, Tim, do you wanna? Talk about that one? Is it on?
Hello?
There it is.
So we have general approval on almost everything interior, um so the new, so the. The lighting that we wanna do, the work on the floor, uh the carpet, uh the concession stand, all those things, um. Strangely enough, the windows themselves, they want us to have a historical um architect remediation, do them. Historically, we can't just replace the windows, um even the mural, I think, is getting approval, that's on the outside. Uh so most of it, I'd say probably eighty percent of the projects have received MHT approval and. Uh our Public Works Department is working with um with Caitlin and the and the cinema to schedule that. Uh one of the big concerns you can imagine is we don't wanna take uh the the main auditorium offline during their busy season. So the thought would be to do some of the smaller projects, uh the TV screens, uh the concession stand, other things now. And probably wait until spring or when they have kind of a down, the the lowest oc- lowest occupancy time for the theater to do. Um the floor, cause once we do the lights, uh we're putting new lighting in the ceiling, but once the lights and the floors are gonna be done, the seats have to come out. And obviously you um you can't do movies without seats, um so the thought is we want, Mr. Kim is working with. Caitlin to kind of bundle all of those projects together, so uh once we take it out, we're gonna do the floor, the the carpet, the lights. Um everything's gonna happen all at once and uh Caitlin is kind of working with her team to decide what is kind of the. The lowest volume of um usage of the theater, uh so we'll we'll time it then. Uh we have five to seven years to spend the money, so we're not in a, I mean, we wanna get it done, um. And the more bond bill money we have outstanding, the the more, the more difficult it is to get more bond bill money.
And that that's why I was bringing up, I know that it's not, you know, our senator and delegates can put put requests forward, but the other senators and delegates. They 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 look at how much is outstanding.
The key they wanna see with outstanding is that you're, is that you're working the projects, um so the good news is we are working all the projects, especially with the. Womata Trail kind of opening up, we are spending that money now, which is what uh they're looking for, uh so really the the bulk of the projects are underway. Um the marquee was a huge hurdle and that's gonna go forward, which is great, um we do need to do some additional engineering work that we not planned on. Because MHT wants to make absolutely sure that the current structure of the marquee um is strong enough to hold the LED. Uh the vendor doesn't think that's a problem because the LED display is nice and light, however, MHT wants to be cautious and they wanna make sure. Um and they like, you know, like to do things the wrong way, um I think ironically, I think the the thing that's gonna take us the longest. Uh are the toilets and the windows, uh because they want those to be architecturally and historically accurate and. It's hard to find a historically accurate toilet. So um but otherwise, that project's moving along great, um Mr. Kim and Desmond. Um are doing a great job working together and kind of staging those projects to um get them done as quickly as we can, but with. Uh as little disruption for the cinema's activities as possible.
Okay, so long story short, we've got uh the uh Metro Connecting Trail funding, bond bill money is is still outstanding. We've got movie theater and the elevator, so those three.
We have, we have more, so the elevator, that was already approved by the Board of Public Works, so we have submitted that contract for preapproval. Uh by the state, the General Service, Department of General Service, once they approve. That contract, it comes back to council for approval, we wouldn't have council approve a contract unless General Service has approved for us to to move forward. Because otherwise, we would, we would have to come back to council if we have council approve a contract that General Service doesn't approve, so. We get their blessing, then it comes to council, so as soon as we get that approval from General Service, we'll bring that contract to council and the the. Mr. Kim and the team will move that expeditionally on replacing that elevator. The the electric vehicle supply equipment projects, we have, Board of Public Works have approved the funding, we have submitted. These two EV stations for approval to General Service, they approved it and that is why we now have two EV stations. Uh here at the municipal building, so that's funded by bond bill money, um the museum, we have received. Uh approval from the Board of Public Works for that project, we have not gone to the General Service for approval of that work yet. Uh but that is also moving, Buddy Attic Playground, that project is completed, completed in its entirety, so we've closed that out. So that is all the bill bond mo- uh projects that have been funded going back to twenty eighteen.
So and the Green Belt Station Connecting Trail, do we have?
That's the Womata Trail that you were just talking about, yeah.
Okay, so I don't wanna temper everybody's expectations too much. Okay, so I don't wanna temper everybody's expectations too much, but, uh, we, we've been very successful in the past, but we have a lot of outstanding projects, so I think we all agree on Buddy Attic Walking Trail. But we should submit two or three ideas. Uh, yeah, Pro Tem, then you all go for some public, uh, input?
Yeah, I just wanted to, to, to make sure, to make sure, cause I think I know which, um, which playground, is it this one up here, this Breeze Wood Drive? It's that one, not the one right by the school, or is it the one, cause I feel like we talked about both of those.
No, go, go a little bit, uh, that would be east, go down, go down, uh, to where Kennerworth, where Kennerworth, so it's.
It's right after you turn onto Breeze Wood.
Go up to Breeze Wood, it's right at the crosswalk before you get to the stops, intersection of Breeze Wood and Kennerworth. Yeah, right there, uh, Breeze Wood and Emmonston, you, it says it right there, Breeze Wood Drive Playground.
Okay, so yeah, so it's that one.
Breeze Wood Drive Playground, right there.
Okay, but some, but so, then that's the middle school, um, look at all those nice solar panels.
I know.
Um, uh, that's the, uh, so part of this property is PGCPS property, then that's the issue, okay?
So all of the property, I imagine?
Yeah, it's almost.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that I was understanding which playground we were talking about.
If you drop your little, your little human right there.
I guess we could take a look at it, couldn't we?
Yeah, so.
It's been there forever, so I moved here in nineteen ninety-eight, the play, the little pocket playground was already there, and I don't think anything has changed.
It looks like what, two swings and a slide? Yeah, so, yeah, that's, that could use some improvement, definitely.
And I know folks are concerned that if we don't have a use agreement in place, that it may, it may, um, stall things, I think that with, uh, with the, I'm a believer that if you're not gonna get it done, move out of the way. And I think that some of the folks that work with, uh, Dr. Joseph, uh, have that mindset, um. I, I'm optimistic, I'm optimistic, I, I, I have to be, right, I have to be.
Okay, uh, let's see, yes, please.
One other question, I'm just recalling, and I can't remember the actual name of the study, where we were talking about bus stops and, um, improving those, and there were only a certain amount that we could do to make more accessible and things like that. And I don't, and I know that we only had a certain amount built in our budget, but that, that would be a considerable amount that we would need to make, um, lighting as well as the accessibility of them. Is that something that raises to the level of being something that would go for bond? And I'm just thinking of the impact across the city, how many people would be benefiting from that as well? Just a thought, I don't know if that was part of the consideration.
I, I like that idea, I think we're only able to renovate either one or two, uh, bus stops each year.
We did fund a lot of the improvements through ARPA, so I, I thought that we were taking care of most of it through ARPA. Yeah, but I would double check with, um, with Terry Ruby, Ruby, to see what, what we couldn't get to on the list.
Okay, uh, let's see, I believe, uh, Ms. Orleans?
Yes, thank you, uh, I would think that the decision to place a Capital Bike Share station anywhere would be that of Capital Bike Share, which unfortunately is not part of Womata, I think it should be, but it's not. Uh, as has been pointed out to council in the past, the instrument for influencing Womata's board is the Washington Suburban Transit Commission, two members of which represent Prince George's County. Uh, Councilmember Eric Olson, uh, the new county executive has yet to make an appointment, uh, fill her designated appointees position on the commission, but nonetheless, one of the members of the Washington Suburban Transit Commission is also the primary, uh, uh, voting member of, uh, on Womata's board. To the extent that Womata's board would be involved, and it could be certainly, in locating, in citing a Capital Bike Share, Station at Greenbelt Station, uh, council should appeal to both Councilmember Olson and the county executive to raise the question with the commission, which directs all state and county money to Womata, uh, to bring about that desired solution. I certainly agree, it would be a desirable solution. I have another question on an earlier subject matter, do I understand that Greenbelt is the only municipality that was overcharged by Pepco?
I don't think so.
I don't think so either.
I don't, I don't, I, I know, I am aware of some, at least two municipalities that have been paying for lights that they do not own or should be paying for.
I would not have thought so either, I apologize, it was partly a rhetorical question, but, uh, uh, Pepco doesn't make anything but profit, it doesn't generate, its parents do, but it does generate no electricity, which it distributes what I might argue for at an excess profit, uh, in this area. It would seem to me that it's appropriate for Greenbelt and other Prince George's County municipalities and other municipalities in Pepco's jurisdiction, delivery jurisdiction area, to consider getting rid of Pepco altogether and forming our own, uh, distribution network that could, just as Pepco does, uh, secure its power from Exelon or other sources. I would like council to raise that as a priority, thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Let's see, is there anybody online?
Uh, there are no hands up online.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Yeah, please, Councilmember, please.
Mr. Someron, uh, number five is Spring Hill Lake Recreation Center, uh, addition, which I know is something I've talked to you about a lot. Um, so earmark fiscal year twenty-six, so are we gonna see that when we talk about earmarks? Is that what you're telling me here, just trying to see if that's what, that's what that means, or?
That, that, the, in, in, on paper, that, that's exactly what it means, we went through the earmark process and our federal delegates endorsed it and submitted it through the committee, and then.
Still operating on a fiscal twenty-four or twenty-five budget in the continuing resolution, that's not even continuing?
I think it's twenty-four, yeah.
I think it might be twenty-four, so I think that's the problem, it's in a budget that never got passed.
And, and just for background, last year, end up, in the, in the twenty-four budget, we did receive, uh, approval by the committee for funding for the youth center, and then all that, that, those recommendations just basically became null and void um, due to funding issues, uh, which is unfortunate, you know, that we put all this effort, or federal delegations put all this effort to fight for these things, and the committee, the committee uh, has an agreement for an appropriations, uh, bill, and then it just, it just doesn't go anywhere, so.
It's our money.
Yeah, it's all of our money, it's all of our federal dollars.
I just wanna come back here.
Well, thank you, thank you, yeah, I, I would like to, uh, to put forward, uh, Councilmember McKenna's suggestion about seeking, uh, funding for additional accessibility improvements or lights or electronic signs with, uh, the bus information posted at, at, at bus stops throughout the city. Can we research, uh, the cost of doing that, talk with Ms. Ruby and look at the schedule and maybe look ahead, I know we've made some improvements, but, uh, the issue of the electronic signs at bus stops that tell you when the next bus stop, bus is coming, I believe we have them in the center, and that's the only location in the city, we have those. Womata was not willing to fund those for us, and it would really be very, very helpful for our residents and visitors to Greenbelt to be able to to look and see when the next bus is coming.
I, I would check with, uh, Ms. Ruby to see what ADA improvements were not funded through the ARPA. I, I would, I would, I would think that council, from what I'm hearing is, your priority is the ADA bus stop standards, which is filling out the concrete pad for the bus to be able to drop the lift into it. Uh, the shelters, we can't do shelters everywhere because there just isn't enough public right of way to do shelters. So I know that the team had worked, uh, uh, had identified all the areas that were conducive for shelters, um, and we just can't place them in, in all the, all the locations that we want to, so. I know the, I know Terry and, uh, and the team worked hard to put shelters everywhere, a- along with the, um, the benches. And we put the benches, we took care of all the benches that we had identified, so we, we, we did that through ARPA, but I'll, I'll see what else is yet to be funded. The signage that you're referencing accompanied or, or go in places where shelters exist, where you could put a solar panel and the, the digital board.
Yes.
Um, so the location must have a shelter for that to, to go in place. There are other alternatives, but I don't know that, I don't know that our community has vetted those, and those are the clear channel, uh, lines.
Yes.
I, I, I understood that those were not welcome.
Those were not favorably received by previous councils, but, but I do think that we, if it's possible to accelerate the, uh, the maintenance and accessibility improvements to, uh, the bus stops that we have, cause there's a replacement schedule, if we can accelerate that with, uh, some bond funding, I think that'd be a good use, and just the basic digital signs, not the, the wall, but solar panel and signage or electronic signage, let you know when the next bus is coming, that would be really helpful, really meaningful to so many people. Uh, Councilmember Pope?
I think we need to communicate, um, why we're not putting these nice bus, um, uh, huts everywhere, because I had quite a few inquiries from Greenbelt East, uh, during election time, why, why we're get, why they're getting benches and not, um, getting these nice little wooden, um, houses, you know, like we have in some of the other places, and I tried to explain it, but I think it's, it needs to be communicated because they, they, they're feeling left out.
I, I welcome feedback, I know we presented it to council, we pres- there, these reports are on our website. Um, and I know there are folks that feel left out, but the information is readily available, and we are very transparent about where we put benches, where we put, uh, shelters.
Okay, we do need to, uh, to, to move forward, go ahead.
Yeah, just a quick comment on that, I, and I, I realize this would take time, but I'm thinking about some of the, I think it's, I think it was, the City of Heightsville has like project update pages, but even if there were a way to like get a map posted on the city website where's, with the, with the bus stops, where you could click on the bus stop, like a GIS map, ArcGIS or something, click on the bus stop, see what it has, what, what we would like to have there, or if we can't have a bus stop, like no shelter can be put here because we don't have enough right of way. But I think that, that something like that, um, would make the information much more readily accessible to residents about accessibility, um, because they could just go and look at the bus stop they're interested in and click and see, and I recognize there's, you know, that, that takes. The information exists, it's a question of compiling it into that format, but that could help with some of those questions.
Uh, okay, okay, I really would like to move ahead, Mr. Orleans has another comment.
Thank you, I of course can't know where there's insufficient public right of way for a bus shelter, but where there is insufficient public right of way for a bus, bus shelter and some private entity owns, theoretically owns, holds title to that ground, the city, if it wanted to be inclusive and make its bus shelters accessible and safer than they are now and more convenient for riders, it could win an easement from those private sectors, and we should be about doing so. And just in, so that I may know, since I don't know, I'd be interested in seeing a list of all of the existing bus stops in Greenbelt where there is no shelter and where it's been determined there's insufficient right of way to construct one. I'll be inquiring about that at a later time, thank you.
Okay, okay, so here's the, uh, the list that I have more or less in listening, uh, closely. Uh, you know, the Buddy Attic, uh, Walking Trail and Path Stage, uh, funding, three hundred fifty thousand dollars, that's something we all agree on. Uh, Lights at Tromhill Park, I really feel like we need to, uh, touch base with, uh, the homeowners associations in the area, I mean, it's a great idea, but we need to, uh, to have their buy-in. With, uh, the Community Center Gym and Stage Floor, there, there's no dollar amount attached to that. But, uh, and Pepco Streetlights Upgrade, a couple of council members have said that they think that, uh, it's not the right time to do that, and there's too many issues going on there, not the elevator, but the Spring Hill Lake, uh, Pocket Park seemed to have a great deal of support, and what am I missing, Mayor Pro Tem?
Well, I think the ones that we, that we sort of added for consideration were the idea just now of the accessibility of the, of the, um, bus shelters, and then the idea of funding, uh, of asking for funding for at least a portion of the things we know we would need at the Indian Creek Master Plan, even if we don't know what the final plan will look like yet.
Okay.
Those seem like the two that we added.
So if staff can do some additional research and, uh, present the ideas, uh, at the meeting, perhaps we can think about these and narrow it down, and perhaps you can get back to us and let us know if, uh, some of these suggestions are not feasible.
I, 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 I will, the, the bus stops is gonna be relatively easier, the Indian Creek, I think it's a little more, more, um, more work needed on what the pricing would be to get at a close estimate. I have a question about the, the Spring Hill Lake, sorry, the Lights at Tromhill, you want us to get buy-in from the HOAs before we consider the lights? I would be, I would be concerned about that, because there's always gonna be somebody that's gonna be against the lights, there were people that were against the lights for, at the Spring Hill Lake Recreation Center, and when those lights went on, I have received zero complaints for the lights. And so I, I, I think it's, we, I would like to vision, revisit the conversation about vision and values, who do we want our recreational assets to be?
I just think that discussion needs to take place, another example where that, uh, discussion has come up is, uh, Lights at McDonald Field. And, you know, clearly we've heard from GHI and the residents there that they are ambivalent or against the idea of having lights there. So, you know, it's, it's a little bit of a hot button topic, and I just think for us to ask for funding for that without, uh, broaching the idea somehow or telling the homeowners associations in the area, hey, this, we're going for money for this, I think, I think that's a bad move.
Okay, but I've heard from council that this is something that you're interested in, so if you're not, then let me know it.
I would be interested in including that on the list, I think that we can work to get the buy-in from the, from, from the homeowners.
Yes, and I have had my hand up about this specific topic, um, no, that's okay, thank you, may I, please?
Please, go ahead.
Thank you, um, I absolutely share that concern, and I, looking at a map and looking at how close Spring, the Spring Hill Lake lights are to the apartments compared to how close the Tromhill Lights would be to any sort of development, um, it's very apples and oranges. Um, I would very much like pricing for what those lights would be, especially considering that we already have a proven use of solar powered lights within the city.
Okay, Ms. Pope?
I just think we should, we should keep it on the radar and we should, we should at least try to get some funding, I mean, who knows if we're gonna get it, right? But we can also, even, we can also talk to the HOAs, um, but we can work, we can work on both, uh, similarly, at the same time. So I would, I would like to, to ask for the funding as well.
Uh, fair enough, fair enough. Uh, just put a pin in that, I, I know there's been a lot of discussion about McDonald Field right here in, in the center and actually putting lights so that the Little League can, uh, play their games a little bit later into the, the games. Well, let's go ahead, I'm sorry, uh, Councilmember.
At, at least we'll come to the council for a vote on Monday, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
And just the general sense I'm getting is this Buddy Attic Stage, that's, that's a, 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 a high priority for folks. Um, I've heard from the Lights at, at Tromhill Park, the Pocket Park, the Gym Stage, and we're adding the bus stops, uh, accessibility issues in Indian Creek, those are the, the favorite ones.
Right, right, and let me just reiterate, on the bus stops, not just the accessibility, but the idea of these signs, which would tell people when, solar panel sign to tell people when the next bus is coming, that would really help a lot of people.
Right, and that would be contingent on there being a shelter, shelter, that is possible if there's a shelter there.
Right, I just don't wanna leave that.
No, 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 right, right, but if there's no shelter that can go in that place, there's no signers that can go in there.
Okay, and.
Then the other one is that I think the Community Center, uh, Sac and Elevator, it's there, we know we need it, so.
But I'm thinking we should only put forward two, maybe three of these, uh, suggestions, so we can hammer that out of the, the meeting coming up. Please, go ahead. Okay.
I, can I?
Yes, please.
And, and you may remember that, Emmett, um, the Tromhill, uh, the, um, Buddy Attic Park Stage, wasn't there someone interested in donating some money towards the stage at one point, I mean, it's, it's quite a few years ago, I know, and, and Jay Davis has brought it up in the meantime a few times, I can't recall the name.
It, it was, uh, Leona, Leoni Penny.
Penny, exactly.
Had made some provisions, uh, perhaps made some provisions in a will, and her son, uh, who is still, we, around, I know some people who know him.
I wonder if we could maybe reach out, and I think Mike. I wonder if we could maybe reach out and I think Mike McLaughlin may have.
I don't think we've ever really followed up properly.
We we have followed up, staff have followed up, yes, we have two families that have expressed interest in contributing to the projects, they're. Not to the tune of two hundred and fifty thousand that we need, but they'll contribute something, the challenge we've, we we were facing internally is that. Um, they they were like naming rights.
Right.
And we have, we don't have a policy that addresses naming rights, just. On the on just preliminarily, I think, I think if someone's paying for an entire project to the tune of two hundred and fifty thousand. I think that's worth consideration of naming rights of a of a stage, but if it's ten thousand dollars for something that costs two hundred and fifty thousand. I think that's 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 a bit of a big ass.
Yeah, I would agree, I mean, there there are various ways that you can go without acknowledging uh support. Uh for philanthropic support for a project such as, uh you know, donor tiles, or there's just a number of ways that you can. Do it without naming the whole thing after, we just need to uh have a policy. Got a little bit of policy, but it needs to be more uh specific. But uh, yes, if there are private uh resources that can go towards uh doing things like this, we should certainly seek them out and follow through.
Could you share that policy? You said there's a, there's a policy for naming?
Well, I mean, there's a policy for for on the trees and benches and plaques.
But those are paid by those individuals.
Yes.
But but the or did, is there a policy, another policy about naming?
No, there's not a more extensive, we've talked about it, I, yeah, but we could certainly look at that.
Okay, well, we welcome.
Also the idea of this cemetery, the urn wall, that was sort of tied up. Uh with the idea of using private dollars to to do different things, somebody had suggested that we have a donor tree or something in. Building, there's one downstairs, I think, or there used to be one in the wall.
Well, Jay Davis is online, she confirms Bernard Penny, which we'd already come to, and then uh suggests a plaque acknowledging donors maybe rather than naming rights.
Okay, hey, let's go ahead and move on, let's talk a little bit about uh scheduling the legislative piece, since we've been talking about. Uh legislative priorities and trying to kind of flush things out, uh this question about uh legislative support. Is something that is on the agenda and, uh, you know, we we. Have been able to uh work with our legislative uh contractor, uh Mr. Carrington. I guess it's been two years now. One year, so prior to that, uh council did most. All of the legislative advocacy on behalf of the city with the support of the Assistant City Manager. And after many years of uh. Request to actually set aside funding to uh to hire a contractor to to assist us with that, we we've done that for the first time. With. Results, just in terms of uh the amount of information that we're getting. Uh, the format of the information and the interaction between, you know, the contractor and and council. So Mr. Someron put together a survey with Mr. George and asked us all for some feedback. Now, the uh survey was not comprehensive, but I think it gets to the core of the question of how. How we should proceed during this legislative session, which is coming up really, really fast. And the results, I believe you got five responses?
Five out of seven.
Okay, and uh so the consensus from those five results. Uh was that we should go with a multi uh multi vendor approach instead of just using one contractor. Uh, perhaps working with uh with others as well.
Sixty percent uh favored a multi provider model, that's three out of the five.
Put that up on the screen if you like. So.
Do you, do you want me to? Do you want me to go over the responses, um, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, sure, if you could concisely and quickly kind of.
Uh, sure, I'll I'll cover the highlights, uh generally, very, very positive feedback on how satisfied people were, I think. The clarity of the communication is an item that we will address with any future uh contractor, but overall, the. The the their, the professionalism of the staff and the accessibility of the information, responsiveness to inquiries and transparency with. Legislative process score high, going down to question number two, which were, which approach do you believe would be best sir, would. Would best serve the city's legislative advocacy needs, sixty percent, which is three out of the five. Uh responded a multi provider model would best serve the city, uh twenty percent. Which is one out of five is a new provider to do the entire scope of work and twenty percent a combination of both approaches. Um, moving on to question number three, the pre the preference from folks is to receive communication about legislative matters is. Emails followed by text message, followed by website and final phone. On question number four, how often do you want to receive information, the majority responses favored weekly. Uh at three to three out of five, monthly is one out of five, and as needed for council input and action is one out of five. Question number five is what legislative matters do you want to receive information on? Number one choice was stated Greenbelt Priority Legislation, number, the number two is tied with three different areas, that's MML Priority Legislation. PG CMA Priority Legislation, and four Consultant Recommended Legislation. Only one person wants to receive updates on all state legislation and one person selected other. Question number six, what are your legislative priorities? Uh, the number one choice was economic development, followed by public safety with four out of five. Then we've had a couple threes, which were housing attainability, environmental sustainability, transportation, all of those were three out of five responses. Healthcare at two out of five and other is one. Number, question number seven was a more uh. Uh narrative responses, what uh question is, is the current legislative tracking workshop an effective tool? The the majority responses said, no, it needs some improvement. Uh, number eight is, is our current legislative contractor providing adequate guidance, uh the the feedback we receive is. The folks that have four responses were generally around improving the the clear communication and alignment with Greenbelt Priorities. Um, number five, there's another narrative response, there were highlights mentioned that there's good relationships and knowledge of the legislative process. Great connections with legislator, lots of information. Uh, what improvements would you, would you suggest is question number ten, better legislative tracking system, more regular meetings and a structured framework. That covers the majority of responses, a lot of it is just, there's a lot of information that's coming to us and. How to make sense of the hundreds, if not thousands, of bills that are in these sheets. And I think that's the majority of the responses.
Hey, well, thank you, I I think that gives us some helpful uh information to uh to work with. The legislative session, the state session is coming up very, very soon, the county, uh their session is ongoing. So the contractor that we were were working with, he had been urging us to hold a retreat or discussion. Uh earlier in the year, I think he wanted to do it in August or September, but because of uh our elections and any number of factors. Uh, we've yet to uh to do uh this sort of a deep dive into legislative priorities. I I think partially it's MML uh has a committee that uh that works and focuses on state legislation that affects all municipalities. And their legislative committee is really just getting started. And the Prince George's County Municipal Association used to provide us with uh additional legislative support and that's gone, so we did put aside some additional. Funding in the budget, I believe it was forty thousand dollars.
The total amount is forty thousand, last year was thirty thousand for the FY twenty six budget. Uh, council reallocated ten thousand dollars, of four thousand came out of the. Membership uh line item, which primarily was meant to cover PG CMA, and then the six thousand, um. Don't remember where it pulled it from, but it was really a movement of money rather than new money.
Right, so uh staff, you you've been uh working and looking at this and thinking through the possibility of bringing on some additional support. Uh, and I know that uh. The idea of doing an RFP is one option. Another option is to to ride on other other contracts that we currently have. So what are our options in terms of bringing on another, uh some additional support? I guess we're working with two firms really, with legal legislative assistance. Right now. Mr. Luci.
Mister Mister Luci and O'Malley, we we hired them for a specific, a specific advocacy advocacy effort. Um, so they're working on a separate matter. The, go back to your question, what are your, what are our options, we conducted an RFP process and we, it was. Uh, a process that went out to all, to all the the legislative support and advocacy firms that we're aware of and we also. Uh disclosed it publicly, we received numerous applications, we went through a vetting process and we scored them. And then had ended up securing one contract. In this, in this, uh for this year, at the request of council to consider other contractors. We went back to the scoring sheet and went down the list to see to the to the next two options. O'Malley was on that list, but we had already hired O'Malley for separate legal matters. Um, so O'Malley was part of the RFP process. The the other firms, there were two other top scoring firms, we've had interviews with them. And we've we vetted the process, we discussed the the options that we have with them, part of it, we were aware of this desire by council to have a. Multi provider model, so in speaking with those two other vendors on the list, we explored the opportunity of splitting up the scope of work, one taking. Uh, taking the lead on the state legislation and another taking the lead on the county legislation and then working. Well, the two of them working together on the things that overlap. And so we 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 had those conversations and we are in the final negotiation steps with a second vendor. To to bring on so we can divide the the duties, we, with the budget, we have constraints because. Both both vendors fully funding their proposal exceeds the forty thousand dollars that are allocated uh for this activity. So we're negotiating uh a reduced amount, we're also being mindful that we did not want to take up the entire, the entire forty thousand dollars because. There are things that come up throughout the year that require immediate action on the advocacy front. So we we wanted to leave some room just for any special advocacy legal fees that we will have. Sometimes we could have a consultant advises about an issue before the county in the state. And that consultant does not have the legal background uh to fully advise us on that matter, so we we. We anticipate having additional legal expenses for a subject matter expert to advise us. On a particular legal issue, for example, we could be talking about a land use authority matter where the consultant is. Is very much aware of the politics and how things move around land use authority, but you need a land use uh attorney. To determine its impact and how we can maneuver around uh the reg- the regulations, that's just an example.
Council member, Poppy.
Have you, so is the idea we would split it between county and state, is that kind of what you're thinking? As far as the the vendors go, so I I mean. My my biggest concern is with the county, I know that the the speed at which legislation is moving is fast, even for the. Staff of the council members right now, so. Um, I think it would be really important to have someone with a lot of experience in that particular in our county council arena, because. Things are not operating as usual over there right now, as we've heard many times. Um, so I I do worry, because things are getting passed through that we're not hearing about. Um, um, things are just moving so rapidly at this point, so. That would be my biggest concern with whoever we we hire, if we if we choose to hire someone to focus on the county, that they have to. They're gonna have to be right in there and hopefully already have some kind of expertise in that, and. I also worry about how they're gonna be reporting back to us, because again, things are moving so quickly. I don't know how we will stand on top of that.
Well, thank you, thank you, you know, I thi- I think it's really important to define the scope of work and that differentiation between state and county is important, but I think. If we bring on an additional contractor, there has to be some flexibility, because there are relationships in areas of expertise where these two. Contractors would really need to to be working together and communicating somehow. The other thing that's difficult is there are just so few uh. Firms that uh are capable, it's hard to find them where there's not a little bit of a conflict of interest, where they're representing. Different kinds of entities, but the bottom line is we do need to uh to move ahead, we've made a great deal of progress. Uh with the way that our legislative advocacy works, but still, it it should be council driven. With the support of staff and contractors and just kind of having a. Good working relationship. Need to make a decision on bringing somebody else on, and then council needs to uh set aside some time, a work session or retreat. Really soon to kind of dive down a little bit more deeply into what our priorities are, Mayor Portem.
Just wondering about from the funding standpoint, because we also, I believe, had allocated some money specifically for um. Legal services related to the MAGLEV, which seem to no longer be as necessary. Is that somewhere, is that, how much of that did we use, do we still have some of that in the budget, and I realize I didn't think of it till just now, so I didn't ask you to look it up ahead of time. But um is that somewhere that would have some additional flexibility for for funding if we needed to for um for things that come up? Just because we don't expect, not that we can stop paying attention, but we don't expect there to be as much need with the the MAGLEV.
The short answer is yes, whatever's available in that fund, we are using some of those funds to cover the expenses that we anticipate. Around the union matter. But yes, there is that funding available for the MAGLEV.
Okay, council member McKinnon.
So, I guess one of the concerns I have about um a multi provider model is that. With any provider, you still have to provide oversight and management, and you add another vendor or provider. That's another person that you have to coordinate when our internal staff is already pulled in multiple different directions. So, uh you know, sometimes more isn't always better, when you have to manage that. And then, second, I just wonder, um, would you be able to get greater efficiency with one provider? Be with the cost, you know, so if you're splitting it up. They're both going to have the cost, as you said, they're over and above, but if you're working with one, are they more amenable to. Negotiating that price so that we can keep that price down, especially if there are additional legal charges and things that we might need to. Think about going into this upcoming fiscal year.
Yes and yes, there's always easier to work with one individual than having to manage two. Um, as a manager, that's that's that's, it's easier to deal with one. Um, the, to the second part of your question, the efficiencies of. Of the work. Um, in in the in the cost structure, we spoke with our existing existing um contractor and. They have been amenable to working through the issues and addressing, making sure that there's better communication and more targeted. Uh, uh, responses and and a focus on legislation, so they've been very open about. Getting feedback and working through the issues, uh in honoring the existing price structure and and. Identifying things that fall outside of the scope of work, and that those things that fall outside of the scope of work can incur, there could be additional. Fees associated with that, if if we need them to follow up with separate matters. Uh, for example, in just full transparency or scope of work specifically stated, uh state and county. Uh, legislation and 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 legal matters or or political matters. Um, we did not anticipate the numerous executive orders that we had to read and try to figure out, so that was something that.
Possibly.
They took on it, and you know, things happen, right, and they jump, they uh. Accepted the call to address those issues, uh and were um were responsive to that matter, so that's an example of something that. That falls outside of the scope of work and we could budget around and and have uh figure out additional fees for things that. Are not part of the explicit scope of work, and there's things that also have their cycle, right, the county council has a different cycle. Than the state legislature, um, you know, those uh early pre 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 submission bills are happening now. And then the session is in full swing and December through March.
We're really uh almost too late uh to. Have as much impact on the pre filed bills with our delegation as as we might have. We need to just come from where we are now and rapidly. We need to just come from where we are now and rapidly kind of tool up so that we're in a position to have as much impact as we possibly can. Councilmember Poppy.
Yeah, um, as we're talking this through, I was just considering, you know, maybe we need to have a different tactic with county and state legislation, you know? You know, we've traditionally, we've, we've been sort of tracking the state legislation that falls into like certain, you know, priority areas. With the county, that's a little more difficult just because their process is so different. Like they have multiple readings and committees and committees as a whole and all these things. So it's a lot more difficult to do at the county level. So I'm just wondering if maybe we need to sort of, um, adapt to the way that we, we work on that issue. Like are we, do we, yes, we still need to be informed on like issues that are happening on the county level. But do we want our legislative, um, contractor to have more of an advocacy role? Like is that more important at the county level for us? You know, as opposed to bill tracking and informing us when we need to weigh in, which is important, but much harder in a much larger scope of work on the county level? Is it more important that we are having someone who's there advocating for us and advocating for specific issues? So that's just something I was kind of thinking about, like maybe the approach should be different. I don't know. What do you think, Mayor?
Well, I, I, I would be hesitant to, to cede too much, uh, to take too much authority away from council and staff in terms of advocating for our own priorities. There are only so many firms that, that are out there really working, uh, with county council and following these issues closely. And sometimes they're, they're working for a number of different entities and that, that could actually, uh, get in the way of us, uh, you know, advocating for, for the things that green belters want and need. So I think we have to be mindful of that. That's one of the reasons why, why council needs to be as engaged as we possibly can. But then, as you state, it, it has to do with getting information in a timely fashion and the way that these bills are changed from one, one stage at the committee level to the body as a whole. It just happens really fast. Mayor Portem.
Yeah, I guess I, I appreciate, um, councilmember McKinney's comments about the efficiencies and things. I guess what I felt like I noticed with our current, with the process from the last year is that even though it was in theory in scope to have both, because I think the, the person we were employing had more interest and more expertise, maybe at the state level, we didn't get a lot from the county. So that's one of the appeals to me about separating it is that if it's for us a very clear scope of work, you are focusing on this, then there's no, it just makes it clear that this is, this is what we want. Don't focus on the county things for green belt rather than, you know, the ones that might be more in line with other things the firm is doing. Um, and so I guess that's the reason to separate them maybe, uh, even though there could be more efficiencies with one, uh, with one. Yeah, well, and being a little bit more targeted may be, may be more effective too.
But, but I'll tell you, I would actually like to have both of these firms kind of looking at the county and say they do have, or just both, two contractors, both sort of working together and maybe amongst themselves deciding which committees or which, which areas they're gonna cover. I think it's possible. So the bottom line on this is I think we do need to move ahead. And based on the survey, uh, there was a consensus that, that we should in fact bring on another contractor. So I'm just wondering, Mr. Samron, will you be in a position to, uh, to bring something to council at the next, this meeting or the next one?
We, we are actively negotiating those two contracts right now, Tim. Yeah, we'll be ready. We'll be ready. And, and I just, just, uh, the question about efficiency, I understood it to be about my own efficiency. It's easier to deal with one person than it is to, to deal with two. That's how I interpreted your question.
It, um, I was trying to preserve your time.
Okay.
As somebody who works with multiple vendors on multiple projects, I know that that is very challenging. And everybody's gonna have their own system and way. And you will then have to be the intermediary to try to bring that to us in, in one package. So that was.
I appreciate it, thank you.
So if we can move and bring on another contractor, uh, but at the same time, we need to set aside some time in December, as soon as possible really, to, to have a discussion with these contractors to try and hammer out some of these ideas about dividing the responsibilities and, and the best way to move forward. And then based on the advice that they give us, I think they will be very, very helpful. Mayor Portem.
Well, I'm just looking at the time that it's nine fifteen, uh, uh, and I think, um, we will have this, this topic on the agenda on Monday. So I think maybe we need to, to move on. I think another sort of couple of other items that are sort of have a little bit more time urgency. I mean, one is deciding on if we need to do a different date for the retreat. I think that's something we absolutely need to discuss tonight. I think some of the, um, some of the liaison roles, some of the, um, not, I mean, for, for, for the, the, the city boards and committees, but also some of the things for, um, like the, the, the COG boards and things like that. What is our, do, because is that something we need to actually be able to vote on on Monday? Or we can, does the December meeting soon enough?
The December meeting is sooner with COG.
For COG, yes.
Okay, okay, just wanted to make sure.
And the, the, the advisory boards, that's up to your discretion. You can leave everyone who's on now and I, do you have a new council member that you might wanna assign, uh, aboard too or, or not? It'll be up to you.
But, but that could wait, that could in theory then wait until, um, until the council retreat. We don't need to talk about that tonight. I guess the deadline for the NLC committees though is, um, is December second, something like that. So that we might need to, that, that also has some time urgency, just thinking of those two things. Maybe then are the, the, the next two things that have the most time urgency to make sure we talk about tonight.
Well, let's talk about the, uh, the date for the retreat, which was tentatively scheduled for the sixth. But that's not gonna work for all of us. So the thinking had been that we would, uh, try and do the retreat on a weekend, on a Saturday. But the way the calendar looks and just thinking about, uh, some of the open dates that we have for work sessions, perhaps, uh, uh, the best thing that we could do would be to plan, uh, the retreat discussion for a weekday, filling one of those work session days, maybe starting earlier, having a little dinner or something. Nothing, just like sandwich or something at six o'clock and then six to ten, something like that. I think that would be a good solution. What are the, we have three work session dates that are open in the vicinity, early December?
Yes, we currently have December tenth, December fifteenth and December seven, December seventeenth that we have not scheduled work sessions for.
Well, the fifteenth is.
Okay, does anyone have conflicts with any of those dates? Tenth, fifteenth or seventeenth?
The fifteenth is a, is a holiday.
Is that a holiday?
It's a hanuk, uh, first day of Hanukkah.
Okay.
Sooner is better than later, the tenth would work for me.
So a question though, because the other date was, um, that we had talked about initially was December thirteenth, that Saturday. And I, I think there was preference expressed for December sixth, but I can't actually remember if the, the thirteenth was a day that was not going to work for some people. Or it was just a preference for the sixth.
I think we had two choices and, and the majority voted for the sixth.
Right, I know, but that's not possible for everybody. So was this, but so was it a preference or was it that the thirteenth is not possible for, for somebody?
It would really depend on the time for me on the thirteenth. I, it looks like I'm booked from eleven to four.
Okay, so that would not allow for.
That would not, uh, that wouldn't be optimal.
Okay, so then that sounds like we, we do the tenth then, we try for the tenth.
Does, uh, can everybody take a look?
So we're canceling to six, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we need to, uh, speak with our facilitator. Is he, have you spoken with Mr. Reynolds?
I have not, I don't have dates to run by him. But now that you, you, I hear the tenth, December tenth, which is Monday, December tenth. And you wanna start at?
No, December tenth is a Wednesday.
Is a Wednesday.
So I'm sorry, Wednesday.
And what time are we starting?
I would suggest that we start to have, start at, at six, maybe have, uh, some sandwiches or some pizza and just kind of work, make it a, a four-hour session. With a break in between? It's too long for a retreat?
P M, I mean, I have to work, I have to get up early in the morning. I, I don't, I just don't know that I can do a four-hour retreat after working an entire eight-hour workday and then doing a four-hour retreat and then getting up and working another entire eight-hour workday. I just, I don't know that that's.
Well, I hear you.
Ideal.
So but could we start at six and then go to nine or nine thirty, six to nine? And at least have that be a start? I mean, we may have to split up a retreat.
Yeah, I think we may have to split it up, but six to nine feels much more palatable to me.
Okay, uh, so those three dates, uh, does anyone, and the fifteenth is the first day of Hanukkah. Is that a high holiday, is that, would it be bad to, to actually meet on Hanukkah? No, it's not a problem really. It's not, it's not a high holiday.
Well, I was gonna say, and it looks like the first evening of Hanukkah is actually December fourteenth, a Sunday. At least according to the internet.
Well, I haven't, well, it popped up in the calendar as.
So I, I think it's okay. So we'll need to check with Mr. Reynolds and find out what his availability is. But, uh, let's, let's do that as soon as possible. So if we can do that on the tenth or the fifteenth, split it up, that's fine. Yes, please.
As another option, you know, I don't know how, like, would a Friday afternoon, so after school is out, but we could maybe start earlier than a regular session so that we could, so we don't have to start at seven, maybe we could start at a five. I don't know, that, that's just another possibility.
I'm okay with that.
I work till five on Friday.
Okay.
Let's see, so that's not, not feasible.
I mean, I work from seven to five, but I would just have to come here straight away. But that's gonna be a really long day for me.
Is that better than a, a work session that's starting at seven thirty and going till ten thirty? Like would it be better to go, oh, sorry, would it be better to go earlier, start earlier to end earlier? Or start later? I guess that's the question.
On a Fri-, you're talking Friday at five o'clock until?
Or five thirty. Five thirty or six, we can start earlier than a seven.
It works for me. So, uh, let's pick, pick three and, and share those with Mr. Reynolds and see if he's available. The tenth, the fifteenth and the, uh, twelfth?
Ten, fifteen and twelve.
So lemme, can, can I say something?
Yes, please.
This is exactly what Jenny just said, said if we're, we're having a full day of work already and then we're adding another three or four hours, it doesn't matter what day you do it, it's gonna come out to the same. If I come, if I work from seven to five, I have a pretty full day already. And then I'm gonna come here at five o'clock and be here till what, nine? That's, that's the same amount of time, right? That's the same issue that, that Jenny was just mentioning.
Well, I mean, I think we're talking about splitting it up over two days so that we wouldn't have to have quite as long of a day. So we would split it over two evenings.
And I think the other, the other advantage of being, of it being on a Friday is that it is a really long day, but at least it's not a school day the next day.
Right, right. Well, let's bounce these dates off of Mr. Reynolds and see what, what his availability is.
All right, so what I heard is I'm asking Mr. Reynolds, his availability on the tenth, the twelfth and the fifteenth after five P M for a two to three hour session.
Right, that's exactly it.
Yeah, to split it between, so two of those dates we want.
They don't have to be concurrent necessarily. I mean, we could, uh, have half and come back in the next month. And it actually might be a little bit more productive for Mr. Reynolds to be able to kind of consolidate, uh, the discussion and his thoughts and present them back to us.
Yeah, yeah, I think I agree with that. I think maybe try to get one of them, one, one in December and then maybe look at another date in January at some point, rather than trying to get two out of three of those.
Right. I think that, just knowing, having worked with Mr. Reynolds and worked with other consultants, uh, retreats, that seems to be, uh, the most productive way to get the, to consolidate all of our thoughts, uh, notes and to kind of move ahead with a good plan. So this question of a legislative retreat also is something that could happen in December. Probably needs to happen in December, doesn't have to be that long. Is that something council wants to do in one of these open dates, uh, in December?
Would that be with our consultant? Is that what you're envisioning?
With, with the consultant.
So will, would you have them in place if you're analyzing that? And would they have enough time to prepare for December?
Probably not.
Both, well, both, both consultants that we've spoken with, one has a very clear process about the retreats and the level of engagement. I would, if we're gonna have the, the legislative retreat, I would bring both of them in at the same time. That would, we just, because you're, the, the availability of meetings in December, there's only two work sessions unless you wanna do a Saturday or, or another day. You've only got three sessions, three dates, the tenth, the fifteenth and the seventeenth. Now, the twelfth is a new day, that's a Friday, so we'll add that to the list. But I would just bring them in for the one session. Is that, otherwise we'd have to find another session to bring another one. And then there's, I think you're already introducing a separate strategy between the two. So if we just have both of them in the room, then we can all try to get on the same page.
Yeah, Mayor Portem.
Well, and it does seem like, I mean, the, the legislative session starts in January. So it does seem like, or at least the, the, the state one. So it does seem like we probably need to try to talk to, have the initial conversation in December. And I would say that if we do the, if we do the twelfth, I don't think we should have a work session on the tenth because then we have Monday, Wednesday and Friday. So I think, yeah, if we can get one of those dates for the, sort of the council internal retreat and one of those dates for a legislative retreat, then I think that may cover us pretty well, as best as we can do.
Right, right. I think the council retreat is the priority. So let's share those dates with Mr. Reynolds and depending on which one, which one hopefully works for him, then, uh, we can try and schedule, uh, a legislative discussion with the two contractors if that's feasible on one of the other dates. Okay? Gosh, there's just so much to talk about in an administrative session like this. I think it's a good idea, councilmember McKinney, you had advocated that we have this kind of discussion on a regular basis. Uh, and I believe, uh, there's the idea of doing this on a quarterly basis is something that's come up. Is it, is it council's will that we go ahead and try and schedule the next, uh, two or three now? Or shall we, uh, try another one in January and go from there?
I don't think we need to schedule it right now because we already have recognized that we don't have that many dates in December. So I think maybe we should wait a little bit.
I guess if it was quarterly, it would be in January or February. January, right. Thoughts? Yeah, please.
Well, I was gonna say, the other one that I think we do need to talk about is those NLC committees. Um, and actually, this is a question, so the, the advocacy committees are, are, are one thing. And I would like to, I, I would like to continue to, I plan to apply to again to the Transportation and Infrastructure Services Committee because I think that dovetails well with the Transportation Planning Board. And I feel like I'm finally getting a handle on this a little bit, maybe tiny. But I don't know if there's other things. I, I, it seems like we probably don't want two people applying for the same committee. Now, I don't know if the same thing applies for some of the, like, um, the other ones, not the advocacy committees, but the, um, the councils.
The councils.
Are they, do they allow more than one person from a jurisdiction to be on them? Do you, I, I just, I don't know.
Yeah, Ms. Pope.
I'm, uh, I'm reapplying for the public safety in the, um, small cities, of course. So, um, we had, we had two people, yeah, we had two people on, on each at one point.
Okay.
Yeah, with, with NLC, I, I think we want to try and cover as much ground as we possibly can. But, uh, you know, I, I think our individual, uh, preferences come into play as well. So there are three types of committees. And, and being actually serving on the committees is the best way to really get the most out of coming to an NLC conference. So there are the advocacy committees that write the, the policy for NLC overall. There's the, uh, the councils, which are gatherings around, uh, topic areas. And there are the constituency groups, like, uh, the National Associate, the Black, uh, the NBC Leo.
There's a few, there's so many.
I think there's the, the, um, Women in Municipal Government.
Wimage, yeah.
There's an Indigenous Peoples Group. And there's an LGBTQ A group as well.
Just sometimes they overlap when they're meeting.
Yeah, they do. They can, so I've, I've served on community development, Community and Economic Development, C E D, for many years. I'm gonna continue to serve on that. I think I may have a chance to take a leadership, uh, position next year.
Oh, nice. Oh, nice.
So, the bottom line is, you need to apply now. And I, I would strongly urge you to apply to one of each of those advocacy group, constituency group, and a council. I've chaired the First Tier Suburbs Council for quite some time. But as Ms. Pope says, we've had two or three people attending the small cities. We're a small, in N L C, we're a small city.
Right, and I chaired the small cities. Me, we were a host for one of the summer meetings here.
Right. So, Jenny, do you know, do you, have you applied?
I have not. I have. Sorry, I haven't applied to any as of now, but I have served on E E N R. And it's okay. I think that I was on the Council of Youth Education and Families, but they don't really meet very frequently. And then I was in Women in Municipal Government, but I mean, frankly, they send too many emails for me. So, I kinda backed off of that, I gotta.
They do.
I, I didn't have, there was no way to digest that, like, put it in a digest. So, I just sort of, I'm sure they're doing great work, but I, I need a little more email hygiene than they have practice, so.
That is funny.
So, yeah, but yeah, I mean, I, I was more interested in serving on small cities for a member council this year. So, it sounds like maybe I'll apply for that, since they do allow multiple members.
That's fine.
That'd be great. I don't know that I will apply for E E N R anymore. I mean, it's, it's okay, but, you know, wasn't the most, uh, I don't know. It wasn't what I thought it would be, I'll just say that. I'm not saying it's bad, I'm just saying I thought it was gonna be one thing and it was not that.
Yeah, we've always had a good representation on that committee. Jay Davis served on that committee, Lita Mack served on that committee as, as well as the Youth and Education Committee. So, Councilmember McKinney, did you go to any, which, which ones of these did you pop into?
I have served on the Human Development Committee, so I plan on reapplying for that.
And Councilmember Neesel, anything look good to you?
Um, I would love to be on the Youth Education and Families, which is a switch, but if anyone is eligible.
Okay. And Councilmember Fritz, what do you think?
If I can help the city by, I'm happy to serve on any where we're needed and our voice is needed.
What's your interest, interest? It has to be, like, to your interest.
Why don't we all just kind of write down what the committees that we are serving on or the ones that we applied? And then, you know, Frank, you can take a look and see where, where the gaps are. And like I said, it's your passion, really. You go to a committee, it sounds one way, it doesn't turn out to be quite that, go to another. But by signing up and actually being a member, the communication and the impact of your participation is much, I think, is much more substantial.
I mean, and sometimes it's like you're on the committee and maybe it's just the people on the committee or maybe not. Anyway, I'm just gonna say that sometimes you get on a committee and you're like, wow, this is not really a committee that's very productive. And, you know, so you gotta step back from that.
Tentatively, looking at the list, Finance Administration and our governmental relations looks interesting.
Yeah, that's good. Okay, so why, why don't we all just write in an email, just send that email to council? We'll take a look at that and see what we've got covered and kind of go from there.
I think, I think we kind of just went through it.
Did we?
Yeah, I think everybody said what they were interested in. So, unless, unless somebody thinks of something else later that they want to apply to. I think for a lot of the constituency groups, you don't really have to apply for them. I don't think, it's not a selective thing, it's just a, if you wanna be on their mailing list.
Just get on that email list and then you hear from them.
That's pretty much it.
Lots of reply-alls.
Yeah. Okay.
We have a, we have a question raised online, and I don't know if you wanna do public comment from in the room, although Mr. Orleans has commented a couple times already.
Okay, who, who was online there?
It is Jay Davis.
Jay Davis, are you there?
Yes, I am. Jay Davis, Greenbelt East. First of all, some of these committees, you have to be appointed by the president of N L C. And so, what has been done in the past is that the executive director of M M L takes the names and promotes them to N L C. So, I don't know if you've been doing that in the past 'cause when you apply, doesn't necessarily mean that you'll be accepted. So, it, it pays to go through the, through M M L, if they still do that, and I don't know if they do. Also, I'm a little bit disappointed that no one is taking on E E N R. That's the environmental advocacy group. We have always, at least when I was there, I was there all thirty years. And maybe it was a bad meeting that Jenny went to, I don't know. But they have always brought, I have always found absolutely amazing ideas to bring back to the city to help with resiliency and sustainability. A lot of the things that Greenbelt does are ideas I brought back from that particular group. And for a city that says that it wants to be sustainable and resilient and green, to not have anybody on that committee, that advocacy committee, to me, is disappointing. So, I don't know how you can work that out. Maybe no one on council is interested in the environment, that's possible, but I'm sure that.
Come on, Jay.
No, that, that, that's their strong interest in the environment. You all have interests in other things, education, communication, transportation. I understand that. But there's gotta be somebody on council that will be a strong advocate for the environment. And I'm hoping that someone will do that.
Hearing the call, I will apply for the position to make sure we are represented on Environment Committee.
Thank you.
Yeah, and in regard to your, your point about working through M M L, I don't think, I don't think it says, my experience has been that the nomination, putting in the application to N L C directly is just as likely to land you a position on the committee as working through M M L. So, you know, based on our discussion and our passion and what we apply for, perhaps we can send that information over to Teresa at M M L so that she knows what we've applied for. So, Mr. Orleans.
Yes, thank you. Getting back to the question of the contractor, so-called contractor. I have known for many years that all of council, or nearly council, all of council will ignore me. And I may be preparing myself for the future that nearly all of council or all of council will continue to ignore me. But that aside, when this came up three months ago, there was a question asked from this lectern, and it was dismissed. Council's free to dismiss what residents have to say, or this resident has to say. But I question the need for any contractor, wholly apart from the role that Mr. Moran played for all those years. Greenbelt pays its dues to M M A and, M L C, and is informed, or should be informed regularly, both before the session and during the session, the status of legislation. Greenbelt has a delegation, the Twenty Second District in Annapolis. We are gonna be meeting with them in the near future. They should inform, the three delegates and the senator, should inform the city of prospective legislation. I don't know what the hiccup and whether or not it was resolved with P G, P G C M A is. Hopefully, it was resolved, but we're a member of P G C M A. They also should be informing the city. Having received, and with regard to the county, we have one immediate member of county council and two at large, we should be informed by them the status of county legislation. I do not see the need for the city to spend money for a contractor, a lobbyist, when in fact the council and city management can be informed by all of the aforementioned. And council, when it wants to consider legislation as to whether or not to support it or oppose it, can have a work session with residents. And residents can offer their own suggestions as to whether council should endorse something or resolve in opposition to something. We don't need to be spending mon-, I'm free to, I, I, I probably would be the freest spender in Greenbelt, but we don't, shouldn't be spending money where we don't need it. Council should do its role, and that's in meeting with the residents and listening to the residents. And the residents should fulfill its role in telling council what they want council to do.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, thank you, Mr. Orleans. Council is fulfilling their role.
You're assuming you're wrong, you're over there.
Excuse me, sir, you're, you're out of order. So, I don't feel the need to say much more about this. It's a consensus of council and staff that we need additional support in order to adequately follow county legislation in particular. So, this is what we have tried to do in the last year, and we'll continue to try in emphasis to protect the best interest of Greenbelt's residents. So, that's what we're doing. That brings us to the next topic. What, what time is it now, Mayor Protem?
Nine forty, so we may need to try to sort of briefly touch on some of these standing rules, ideas that we have, but develop that more later. I know we had some ideas that had come up in previous discussions. But yeah, clearly, we're not going to get to everything on, on, on this list.
And the executive session tonight, I really don't think that we are going to be able to do much with that, which is something I brought up in our meeting on Monday, other than talk a little bit about the timeframe. Councilmember.
I'm, I'm just wondering, because we do have an executive session, if we could just see if there are any of these things that we can table and move into the executive session, because it's already almost quarter to ten. So, I think we could, if we could just go through this and decide what we need to talk about tonight. And it seems like many of these things are things that we could move, we could table for another time, so.
Well, I, I agree. But I think the discussion of council rules, I think we need to do that for Councilmember Fritz and for all of our benefit at the beginning of the, our term. And if we don't do this tonight, we won't be in a position to actually approve these rules on Monday.
I don't think we can approve them on Monday anyway. That's not gonna happen.
We, we need to talk about them, we need to approve them as soon as possible. So, in your opinion, Councilmember, what, what do you feel like we can table? Because I, I just, I don't really feel like in the executive session, I don't think that there's a lot that we can cover.
I mean, I think, right. I think that we can table community liaison real rules. I think we could table the calendar maintenance procedures. We could maybe, I don't know, I, I assume, Mr. Samarano, you prepared to talk about the budget process? Is that, that's to you, I imagine, because?
Yeah, yes, I, I'm, I'm ready to talk on any one of these, any one of these items. The, I did not put the list thinking that we would discuss them all.
Yeah, I, I, I think.
There were really just some suggestions.
I feel like we've covered, yeah, we've covered a lot of ground tonight. Like, the parliamentary procedures training, I don't think we have to talk about that tonight.
We could talk a little bit about the, about the content of the retreat. We need to, we need to think that through. And perhaps the parliamentary procedure training, perhaps that could be part of the retreat, or?
Yeah, I think, or we could discuss it at some other, other point.
And I think a lot of the other topics there would actually be topics that would be informed by our discussion.
Right, I think standardizing communication protocols, that's a great topic for the retreat, you know, as well, as well as like the community calendar maintenance, stakeholder engagement scheduling and meeting coordination. I think that those are things that are great for the retreat. You know, because we're all beat together and this is really sort of organizing how we're gonna be functioning together as a council for the next two years, so.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind hearing, just a quick update or overview on the process, the budget process preparation, where we are with that. But first, uh.
Well, I was just gonna comment, is that, because I think we have tried in the past to have in December or maybe early January, a conversation about council priorities to inform the budget. Does that need to be our other work session in December?
I think it, I think it should.
Any big changes, you know, for, that you wanna see, I would welcome hearing that as soon as possible. I'm gonna provide the directive to senior staff in December, what the budget targets will be. In December, we expect to have the, the revenue projections, and that determines whether our current spending level is on par with expected revenues and if we're, have room to add activities, or do we need to cut things? That, that's really what we're looking at this summer. So, if council is interested in any funding of special activities or significant projects, I would like to know that sooner than later so that we figure out how we're gonna pay for it. If we're adding additional officers, as you know, we can take on more, more officers, we need to find a way to fund those. It, it's gonna be, I, you know, I don't wanna, don't wanna sound any negative in, for the twenty twenty seven budget cycle. We know the lot, the two years that I've been here, I haven't had the luxury of adding much of anything to the budget. It's all been reductions, reductions for two years. So, I'm hoping that this year's, the twenty twenty six reductions were enough that in twenty twenty seven, any, any cuts, if any, will be minimal. But I have to be prepared for what could be a worsening economic environment. So, if you have any, 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 any special projects or any, anything you wanna see different, I wanna know, sooner the better. And now, if you're also open to raising taxes, I would like to know that sooner than later, too.
Now, for many years, council has wanted to have a, to make sure that there was like a pre-budget discussion, even just to get a sense of what you're thinking is, you know, before it goes out to the department, and so that we can in fact have, let you know about what we've heard from the residents and what's most important to them. So, I would be very supportive of the idea, with the limited time that we have, the dates, to actually have that pre-budget discussion in early December.
All right, so we're, we're working on, we're trying to squeeze in a lot of things into December tenth, eleven, December fifteenth, and eleventh, and December seventeenth.
It's gonna be a jam-packed week.
Those are the dates that we've got to, to work with. So, I'll figure out what we can work out with Tom Reynolds and the legislative support consultants, and whatever's available, that will be our budget checking.
Okay. So, so, and you just kind of gave us a thumbnail overview of the budget timing, right?
The, and that's the, the budget timeline. Our initial projections go, or is going out to the team, to senior management team in December. One of the things I'm hoping to improve upon this year is the special recognition that we receive from the G F O A, aligning the strategic goals and objectives. So, we wanna build upon that work that we've done as a budget preparation and continue to get better at those things. That also includes the performance measures. We've got the M B Os, but we wanna connect the performance measures to the strategic goals and objectives. So, we're, we're doing that work. I, I spoke with James and this morning about the budget tools that we'll be using. We are making changes to the backend and how we're collecting data with Ron, Ron Covington, our treasurer. There are some processes we'll be changing internally about how we'll manage the documents and the narratives. So, we're, we're making some changes on how the budget book is, is being prepped. The, I attended the I C M A conference in Tampa in October, and I attended the G F O A budgeting sessions. And there were really good techniques and engagement opportunities that were presented, and I wanna try some of those tools and techniques that were shared about getting constituents involved in the, in the process.
Well, fantastic, Mayor Protem.
Yeah, so I have a suggestion for standing rule suggestions because I think we need to go into our closed session to do that sooner rather than later. So, I think whatever date we have the retreat, that's a good time to talk about that. So, my suggestion is that we all have homework, that we accept the homework of reading through. I've already started actually writing out some suggested changes, but that we assign ourselves homework of reading through the standing rules and writing out, writing out suggestions for, for changes. And then maybe we can make sure we have those, whatever date we end up with the retreat, that everybody shares those so we can be prepared for that discussion, but not try to get into any of that right now.
Yeah, I mean, I'm.
I'm good with that, I've already done part of that, but.
Well, then your homework's already done.
It's, it's good reading, I wanna go back and read through it again, two or three times. So, at this time, I guess we are going to go into an executive session. So, Mayor Protem, would you, well, wait, actually, we've got some information items. You have two information items?
Yeah, I have two. The E V charging stations are power up, so I hope to open those up tomorrow. And there will be free for use by the public, I know, scandalous. They'll be free.
Did you, did you say free?
Free. Well, be free to the citizens, though, you know, the electricity will be covered by the citizens through their taxpayer money. But they will be open to the public, in part because council will have its first reading on the resolution to authorize me to implement charging fees at Monday, at Monday, the seventeenth meeting. That's the first reading. Resolutions require two readings, so. That's the first reading, resolutions require two readings, so we couldn't, I couldn't implement the new fees until council has fully adopted that resolution. So we're looking at three weeks of free charging.
All right.
It would be too much to have those stations up and running and not be available.
It's like a holiday gift, right?
Yes.
There you go.
End of the year. So that's the, the, the first announcement. The second announcement is the American Legion Law Enforcement and Civilian and Public Safety Awards is this Friday. So hope that's on your radars at the American Legion, 5:30 to, 5:00 to 7:30.
So at 5:00, it's kind of like a social, and then the actual dinner and program start at 6:00, is that correct?
I'm always formal, but yes, it starts at 5:00.
Okay, I'll probably get there about 5:30 or 6:00. I love, just spending so much time there yesterday at the Legion, it was fantastic.
That's right, with the governor.
There you go.
We had a great, a great activity yesterday, the veterans ceremony, good turnout. Weather was a little rough, but yeah, it was, it was a successful event. Great pictures, there's a great video at the timeline of yesterday's activity. So I encourage you all to check that out if you haven't already done so.
Let's see, Mayor Proton?
Yeah, a couple of my information items, I'll just, I'll just save or write up and, and to include as, as reports for Monday. I was gonna give some updates on, on some of the work Greenaces has been doing on Save As You Throw, and then also that meeting that I emailed about, that, that, offering everybody to attend the meeting with the resident who has some expertise in voting systems and ranked choice voting. So I will just write those up as reports. But I think, just to note that tomorrow, there is, we have the Public Safety Town Hall at 6:30 at Spring Hill Lake. That is also unfortunately the same time as Greenbelt Rotary is going to listen to Kevin Carpenter Trudisco talk about invasive species, or invasives, and how you can remove invasives. So I think we might need to do some divide and conquer on, on that one. There is also, I believe, a forum about the Transportation Improvement Plan, which is at 6:00. So I don't know that I'm gonna be able to, I might try to listen into the beginning of that, but I don't think I've added that to the city calendar, but if, yeah, those are all three somewhat overlapping events tomorrow. So just, we might, yeah, I will be at the Rotary thing because I am in charge of bringing the refreshments, but then I may come to the Spring Hill Lake afterwards.
What time is Spring Hill Lake?
It's at 7:00.
6:30, I think.
6:30.
Yeah.
Just have my calendar with me.
Okay, so those were just the things that, and yet, like I said.
And that's at the rec center, you said, Chris?
Yes.
Yeah.
Lots of activity, Saturday is a full day, too, the, the morning starts with the Dora Kennedy, 3K, 5K run. That's one of the things that council and Dora Kennedy discusses, one of the celebration events when we did our, our walk. I'm gonna, I'm gonna walk it, maybe run it. Then we have the ribbon cutting for DMV, Iron Gym.
That this weekend?
That's the Saturday, Saturday, yes.
1:00.
1:00, 1:00.
Listen, have you put that on the calendar?
I have not put it, it didn't have a time on it until like yesterday, I'll put it on the calendar. Oh, no, Zehan did it, Zehan did it.
I've really come to like rely on that, that you get things, you're so efficient at getting things on the calendar, I really appreciate it. So 1:00 PM is the ribbon cutting, and I think I have the diabetes walk on there already.
So, do you know with the diabetes walk, is it a fundraiser, are they looking for teams to raise money?
It is a fundraiser, they're raising money for their PTA. But I believe some of the funds are also gonna be going for diabetes awareness because November is Diabetes Awareness and Prevention Month.
Yes, yeah, I'm thinking about doing a proclamation on that on Monday. So are there teams, or like, or is it individuals just making?
It's individuals.
Okay.
I believe it's $15 for adults and $10 for kids. I think it's a good idea for you to maybe run the 5K, then head on to DMV Iron, work out some more for the ribbon cutting, so.
It is also America Recycle Day on November 15th.
Yeah.
That's right. Okay, okay.
Oh, yes, and the reparations commission is also at 2:30.
On Saturday as well.
Saturday also.
It's a busy week.
I hear it's gonna be an interesting one.
Yes, yeah, yes. Okay, well, if there's no further information items, let's go ahead and go into our executive session.
Okay, so we need to call a meeting to order, a special meeting to order.
I hereby call the special meeting of the Greenbelt City Council to order. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Fritz. Councilmember Niesel. Councilmember McKinney.
Yes, yes.
Councilmember Pompey.
Yes.
Councilmember. Mayor Proton Weaver.
Here.
And Mayor Jordan.
Here. Okay, thank you so much. So at this time, if there are no further information items, can you please take us into the executive session?
Yes, I move that council go into closed session in accordance with Section 3-305B. I think it's just one, right? It says one and eight, but I think it's just one. 3-305B, one of the general provisions, Article of the Annotated Code of the Public General Laws of Maryland, one to discuss the appointment, performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction, and any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals. The purpose of this meeting is to discuss the city manager's goal setting. In addition to council, Director of Human Resources, Dwayne Martinez, and City Manager Samaron will be in the session. Note that council will not return to open session following this closed session.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Pope has seconded. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Yep, Councilmember Fritz.
Yes.
Councilmember Niesel.
Yes.
Councilmember McKinney.
Yes.
Councilmember Pompey.
Yes.
Councilmember Pope.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Weaver.
Yes.
And Mayor Jordan.
Yes, and the time is 9:56. Let's go ahead and turn off the Zoom and the video cameras so that we can get.